Meeting call to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation,
under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 7th, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on two items to be presented. The first item is going to be presented by Kevin Ketti, our fire chief, the Asbury Park Fire Department Apparatus Request Rescue 85.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to do this presentation. Last meeting at the boundary appropriation ordinance when it passed was our rescue truck, and you had some questions. You stated that you had some questions. So we put together a presentation, and this was a project done by Battalion Chief Robert Pasquariello, and he is the most qualified and the most fitting person to present this presentation and follow up any questions. So with that, I turn this over to Battalion Chief Robert Pasquariello.
Thank you. Good evening. Try and keep it as brief as possible while giving you the information that you need to make an educated decision on this. So the first thing we would have to talk about is what exactly is a rescue truck? What do we currently use it for? A rescue truck is not your typical fire truck. It doesn't extinguish fires. It doesn't carry a ladder. It doesn't, in Asbury Park, even respond to most incidents, and I'll talk about that in a second. So what does it respond to? It responds to what we call technical or specialized incidents, rope incidents, high-angle rescues, trench cave-ins, building collapses, and most importantly for us is confined space type rescues, which means anytime utility personnel at the sewer utility or utility personnel throughout the city are entering confined space areas like manholes or underground areas. Anytime that these entries are made, under OSHA regulations, the entrant is required to dedicate a rescue team. So for us in Asbury Park, that means we respond, or we're the standby dedicated team for the Asbury Park Sewer Utility, and also via contract for Two Rivers Water Reclamation Authority in Northern Monmouth County, the Borough of Rumson, and the Ocean Township Sewer Authority. Whomever's got the presentation, could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So how do we staff the apparatus? Currently, how we staff the firehouse is we staff an engine company, a ladder company, and a shift commander. We don't staff a dedicated rescue company. When we have a technical rescue incident, our ladder company personnel split and respond with the rescue apparatus and also their manned apparatus, which would be one of our ladder trucks. Excuse me. So the rescue truck does not carry personnel in our staffing model in Asbury Park. It literally only carries the tools. Now, when we call it the tools and when we say the toolbox here in the presentation, I just do want to, I want you to understand that we're talking about, conservatively speaking, maybe about a half a million dollars' worth of equipment on the apparatus. To give you an idea of how much that equates to, that's about on our weekly check sheet when the guys perform the equipment checks on Tuesday. It's about four pages of single-spaced individual items that are carried on the rig. So we can go to the next slide, please? So with that said, next we have to identify what the problem is. Why are we here to begin with? To put this succinctly, the current truck is a 1994. We did not buy it new. We purchased it used in 2006. It was the first rescue truck that we had for the city. As that truck has aged, it's created a few problems for us. One is a maintenance problem. So in 2020 alone, rescue truck had 10 instances of maintenance, which means it had a maintenance problem that was severe enough that caused it to go out of service. That resulted in about two weeks that we did not truck and about $1,000 of parts cost. Just so you know what that means, you don't really have a basis to understand what that would mean. Our first two engine companies, the first two apparatus, had 11 combined instances of maintenance in 2020 with a cost of just under $500 and only nine total days of out-of-service time. Those trucks responded to about 1,500 fire calls and accumulated 3,300 combined road miles. Rescue truck, 36 road miles, and responded to approximately, an average over the last three years of approximately 20 incidents per year. So it's very difficult to keep this truck in service, even with minimal road mileage and minimal response. Now, one note about those responses, because we don't staff a rescue as Asbury Park, it's, again, it's not responding to every incident. So when we say it's responding to approximately 20 incidents a year, you may wonder what the financial prudence is to even have a truck that responds to that little. These incidents are what we term in the fire service, high-risk, low-frequency incidents. And a good proportion of them are actual emergencies where there is, someone's life is in mortal danger. So what's the solution? Well, we have a couple, there's a couple of solutions. One is to maintain the status quo. The issue with that is that it's reliable enough that we're concerned about what to do when it doesn't, able to respond to an incident, one of these high-risk, low-frequency incidents. We actually, just in the last two years, have had two instances broken down in incident, one of which was a fire in Asbury Park where we actually had to have it towed back to be prepared, just to keep it ready. Status quo with this truck. Doing, taking the equipment out of it when it's broken, and we're putting it on the floor of bay. And one of our reserve ambulances into bay, and as it comes in, we take the equipment that we think we're going to need on the incident, and we, not literally, but figuratively, fully equipment into the ambulance and respond with. So option for the city is to not arrest the truck. That creates a couple of problems for us. One, we have to, or wouldn't be able to fulfill, which isn't a terrible problem from the city perspective because we could simply cancel those agreements. The big problem for the city is that, again, we have to have OSHA mandate that we have a dedicated rescue team for our sewer utility anytime they're making entries into confined spaces. So city perspective, if we didn't have the rescue truck or the ability to respond to the incidents, we'd have to find somebody to respond. The problem, and this is not meant derogatorily towards the volunteer department because I am a current volunteer. Volunteer departments can't provide this service, which is the reason that we have three contracts for this service to begin with. So we'd have to find somebody to do this for us, and would be, we then would have to contract with them to come here in the event necessary. Next option would be to replace this with what we would term a full rescue truck, which is what most departments who staff a rescue company would purchase. That means that there's space for firefighters, firefighting equipment. We don't need that because we don't have the rescue company. We need a million dollars' worth of tools for us. The rescue truck, conservative speaking, would put us at six or $700,000 to purchase that, and I couldn't with good conscience tell you that would be financially feasible. It would be pretty imprudent, again, because of the way that we use the truck. So the last slide, the one you can see on your screen, it quite literally fell, this nearly fell into our lap, which is why we decided to make the presentation for the apparatus. It is a, it's built in 18 demo for rescue, one P and L, Walt, the company that builds our ambulances for us currently. It is unit, but I don't want you to confuse that with a used unit. It's not a used truck. It comes with a full fee from today that we own it, as if we were purchasing that truck new. It currently has very mileage, 500 miles on it, and if we were to build this truck new, it would about $40,000 to $60,000, service speaking, but the demo unit, it comes with a significant financial thing for the city. This has 40 cubic feet usable space. That currently more, it's actually more space, even though it looks smaller, it's more usable space than the rescue truck. In addition, we've requested, in that $190,000 request, approximately $18,000 in tool mounting. Why this is important, in short, is the rescue truck was not built for our tools. It was not custom-built for our tools, and tool mounting that we've done in that rig has been in-house, which is, to say the least, imperfect. We actually had an instance while we were responding to an emergency where some equipment or confined space tripod fell off the apparatus, and it was returned by a Monmouth County road crew later in the incident. So to say that it's an imperfect solution, how we're doing it right now, I think is an understatement. And ask, because this is what we call a light duty and not a full rescue truck, we're not paying for it, nor are we maintaining extra space for crew area, SCBA firefighting tools. Again, and that's because of the way that we use it. In Asbury Park, we don't really need that full rescue truck. So if anything, that's the long and short of it, more short.
It's my understanding that the presentation was breaking up quite a bit. Is there anything you guys didn't get that you'd like to have repeated? No?
No.
Any questions?
Yeah, more, I have some questions. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just going to speak for myself. I don't think it was a question about like, if we needed a new truck, we need a new truck. I think my problem is I'm getting, excuse me, I say I'm getting tired by somebody else handing me downs. He answered part of my questions. It's got 500 miles on it. What year is it?
It was built, it's a model year 2019, Mayor. It was built at the end of 2019 as a demo unit. So basically, it's been shown, you know, it's a showpiece, more or less. And after a year or two, they then put these up for sale at a considerable discount.
Right, and again, you know, years ago, when I worked for the city, when you guys worked for the city, you know, when the city was in bad circumstances, we had to buy like used or second-hand down the equipment. I don't think we're no longer in that position. And again, as you say, it's got 500 miles on it, and looking at your chart, like 83, 85, went out of town or in town the entire last year, 126 miles. So that's like, add in the extra two weeks that it was down, you're talking about less than 135 miles. So that's four years of service for this truck in a normal year for Asbury Park. And as you're saying, last year was not a normal year. I see no facts to present that. So I guess was last year a normal year or was that abnormal for 126 miles on the road?
No, that's normal for that apparatus because it's not staffed. So it's literally only going out the door for training and specialized rescue incidents, which is approximately 20 a year. It averages about 20 responses a year. So that's a normal year for us. The thing with the mileage is that's, you know, 500 miles is about, like you said, four years' worth of responses for us. But the big thing in terms of saying a used truck or a new truck is that for us, it's going to, it's going to be as if it's a new truck because we have custom tool mounting on it, but also because it comes with a warranty, an as-new warranty. So the Ford warranty, the bumper-to-bumper, three-year, 36,000-mile warranty is as if the truck was built new for us. And all of the New Jersey Emergency Vehicle Warranty, which they do a lifetime electrical warranty and a body warranty, that's all going to be as if the truck was purchased as new.
Okay, did I hear you correctly? It did break up a little bit. I could hear the majority of what you said, and no problem. Did I hear you correctly saying 83, 85 did not transport members?
So what I mean is it does not transport, it does not need to transport an entire crew. So for us, for a specialized rescue incident, we'd be sending about between four and six people off the floor. But the actual 83, 85 apparatus does not need to transport the crew because we're responding with the apparatus that they're on. So the first two ladder truck would be the apparatus that they're assigned to for that day. When the incident comes in, they're also cross-staffing. So we're taking a member off that apparatus, and they're responding to the specialized incident with the on-duty ladder truck and also 85. So when we say that, what I mean by that is that it does not have to transport a full complement of a rescue company of four to six personnel. It really only has to transport the tools that are for the specialized incident.
Okay, let me rephrase my question. And from here on out, when I say 83, 85, I'm talking about the present one we have today. Does 83, 85 transport firemen to the scene of what these calls?
Currently, when we get an incident, no, we respond with more than one apparatus.
Does 83, 85 transport members to the scene?
Yes.
Okay, just because at the bottom of your, the solution, no extra unneeded space for personnel, so obviously it takes personnel to the scene. So currently, 83, 85 takes personnel to the scene, and this new proposed 83, 85 will not be able to take personnel to the scenes except perhaps the driver and somebody next to the driver.
Correct.
What are the dimensions of 83, 85 present compared to 83, 85 proposed?
The overall dimensions or the usable equipment storage?
Overall dimensions, body size, container size, everything, where it says it's 540 cubic feet, where the other ones, 505 cubic feet, but body size, and I guess the body size is reduced because this cannot transport personnel.
Correct.
So now we have to send more than one vehicle to a scene where with 83, 85, we did not have to.
We don't have to with the current 83, 85, but we do because of the way that we staff it.
Okay, does the new proposed 83, 85 have a generator and lights that we use with the old 83, 85 for the police department for shootings and everything else? That, you know, it was used more, from what I'm told, I could be wrong. It was used more in-town than out-of-town. Or if we had a shooting, it could go out there and set up lights and help the police department at night. Does this truck, the proposed new 83, 85, have that built-in generator and have that built-in light?
It does not have an onboard generator. It has 12-volt LED scene lighting, which is what we're going to, it's what we went to on the new engine. Because it reduces your maintenance cost of having a generator on the apparatus. With the new 12-volt LED lighting, you can run it off the 12-volt vehicle electrical system without having to have a 240-volt AC generator on the truck.
Okay, hold on a second. And with all the earlier meetings, I lost the page. So you said $18,000 of something. And then I was looking at the requisition, and you can bring that up on the screen if you want to and walk me through that because you said $18,300 worth of something. I didn't know if that was the same thing. But a lot of that had nothing to do with compartments. It had to do with lights and this and everything. So it had nothing to do with building compartments. I didn't know if they were the same numbers or different numbers.
Yep, so in the requisition, if you look in the packet in the requisition, that would be as if we spec the truck out ourselves. Obviously, this was a demo unit, so they have to give us their boilerplate spec of how the truck was built. The only thing that we did custom to that requisition would be the $18,000 that we added in of custom tool mounting, which means that our special operations, Battalion Chief and our special operations truck captains would take our tool allotment over to a P and L. They'd basically lay it out, and they would custom mount the tools into the new apparatus so that each tool had a specific spot and was secured to the rig.
And that's what I apologize about somewhere in this house of mine and on the floor where all the other papers are. I misplaced the purchase order in the requisition. So I apologize for that, where I can't look at it. But again, I didn't see $18,000 worth of like, you know, cabinets as you're saying.
I think it's, I think if you have that, or if you bring it up, don't quote me, but I believe it's under the published options, and you should see a tool mounting allowance.
I didn't see that. I saw the back page of the requisition where it came to, I was going to say it was $18,300, something like that. So I didn't know if it was the same number, just a coincidence. Both of them start with $18,000. And then, again, you know, back in the days when we were like broke and everything, I could see taking somebody else's mistake. Obviously, this was not our choice. It would not be painted red and black. So it was for some other town that didn't accept it. Model, whatever you want to call it for the company. But it seems like we're taking somebody else's, somebody else's something they can't sell for Asbury Park. And again, we used to be a second-hand town, but I don't think we're no longer there. And again, with this thing only operating 126 miles, and it was down two weeks, which is like another five miles and down 3.8% of the year. And I don't recall anything. I believe I recall a letter from either you or the chief or whoever's in charge of equipment for the fire department saying like, this was not our first choice as far as like replacement equipment. There was something else higher on your list. So why are we jumping something that's tempted to pick up somebody else's dilemma they can't get rid of?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Chief Ketti again. This is an opportunity that presented itself, this demo. I don't think it's something that somebody couldn't get rid of. They built it as a demo truck. By all means, we would certainly welcome a full-size style rescue truck, but we felt that the cost of that was prohibitive for what we want to do. We were trying to follow a vehicle replacement program. There's other items, you know, as time goes on, where we need to replace apparatus. So we felt that we were being fiscally responsible with this type of purchase.
Okay, but again, then, you know, I'm batting all around the place. I'll keep on batting. I think our first responsibility is to the city of Asbury Park. And like, again, I had no problem going higher. I don't know if I'd go $900,000 for the right truck. I mean, this doesn't have a generator. This doesn't have the lights that help the police departments. So this is nothing that really can help the city. This is more for outside, and we're called three or four times a year, a total of 126 miles, and at $190,000, it just seems that excessive. But I was more going to like, let's buy the right one that's needed for the fire department that can like, one truck take everybody, like the old 83, 85 could do, so we don't have to take two or three trucks to a training exercise or exercise that we're obligated to do as per contract. And maybe, maybe we, I don't know, we should get out the contracts. Why not ask the other towns that we are doing this contract for to like pony up one-third of the cost of the truck?
We could ask that.
Okay, and then I did, I'm sorry, I did find the thing and tagged. The thing I was talking about was, well, I just, because I know you said $18,000, and it was on the back page of the requisition as this is, as unpublished options. It came to $18,400, and I didn't know if they were one and the same.
No, that was actually a, that was actually just a coincidence. Total unpublished, it just happened to be the same thing.
Okay, I'm glad I found it and you could clarify that.
What I was talking of, Mayor, if you have that in front of you, if you go to the published options, I think it's the first-line item, if memory serves me correctly, you'll see the tool mounting allowance. That's the actual tool mounting allowance that I was speaking of.
Okay, I see it. Quantity 36, $18,000. I often see on the page before that, like, rescue one, repeat customer, because we're such a nice guy, the guy's knocking off 25 grand. Customer discount, because we're such nice guys, the guy's knocking off 25 grand. Stock vehicle discount, because we're such nice guys, the guy's knocking off 41 grand. Why don't we tell the guy, hey, we'll take it off your hands for like $80,000 instead of 190, and go from there? That's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
So I just have one. Out of the, out of the 20 instances where you've used the rescue truck last year, how many of them were in Asbury Park?
I could look that up, and I could certainly give it to you. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
I can send that to you through the city manager if you'd like.
That would be great, thank you.
And Chief Ketti, if you can just clarify, it's my understanding that the organizations that we have the agreements with pay us a fee to provide the service of the truck. Every time they call us out for a call, we charge them for that call, is that correct?
Okay, so the way the service contracts are written, they gave, they give us enough money with a cushion to cover the overtime costs to do an OSHA-required onsite drill once a year at their facility. They also provide money that goes into an equipment fund to replace perishable items, normal wear and tear, and things like that. Any other costs incurred for an actual emergency response are exclusive of the contract and would be billed out accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, our next presentation will be by Michelle Alonso, the Director of Planning and Zoning, the Stormwater Control Ordinance.
Melody, I'm, Melody, and Michelle, I apologize, Donna, I apologize, and Chief Katty and Pags, I apologize. I couldn't turn the damn mute off. So as far as what Donna said, okay, we're paid, I think we're paid $95 an hour for the vehicles. So it would take us 2,000 hours to get back to 190 grand? I'll let that go, thank you. And I apologize again, I couldn't get off you, my fault. Next.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is Chief Katty again. I thought we were finished. Was there one more question?
Yeah, Kevin, totally my fault. I apologize, the phone was on mute and like the black screen was there. I couldn't get the black screen off. I was like, oh my, don't hit red, I'll get cut off altogether. So as far as like going back to Donna's question, as far as like calls, how we're paid for them, I thought you sent this to in an email that we're paid. I could be wrong. $95 an hour for the vehicle if it's needed, and obviously it would be needed. And if I'm correct, that would take us 2,000 hours to make up for the payment of this vehicle. If I'm wrong with math, I apologize.
Well, yeah, it would be considerable. We bill by the FEMA rates because that's the easiest thing to justify, and they're pretty liberal, I should say, in our favor. So liberal, I should say, in our favor. So, um, uh, we would bill usually on a prorated basis, but we would, we would bill add for the truck and then of course the personnel costs.
Okay. Thank you. And again, I apologize for, uh, not getting back on sooner.
Okay.
Are, are you complete now, Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Yeah. Sorry.
That's okay. Uh, we'll now move on to the Stormwater Control Ordinance presentation by Michelle Alonso, the Director of Planning and Zoning.
Evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me clearly. I am going to give a brief presentation on the, uh, new requirements by the New Jersey Department Environmental Protection that all municipalities in the state of New Jersey update, um, their stormwater sewer control ordinances on March third, two thousand twenty-one. Um, they, they put out a model ordinance that we are using as the base of our, our revision and also recommend, recommended by our city engineer. So I'm gonna again, go over this briefly. This is still a work in, still work in process. Um, this, um, but this model ordinance is substantially greener and has more regulations than the past model ordinance that the state had put out and that is currently adopted in our zoning code here at the city of Asbury Park. And the, the biggest change here is my number one, that green infrastructure will be required to control runoff. Uh, treat stormwater runoff can happen through one of three ways, through infiltration to the subsoil, filtration by vegetation or soil, or storing stormwater runoff for reuse. Uh, next big trend changes to groundwater detention. Groundwater detention is a method of controlling the amount of flow of water into the system. Um, our larger projects here in the city, we see, we require that they provide what's called a detention basin. Now the big change with this is that smaller detention basins will be required and other green methods can be used and will be required to be, uh, to, uh, to be used to retain water on site rather than it just runoff into the street and into our sewers. That the drained areas of the site must meet all, um, in the, and then before it was an average that was a requirement. Now each smaller detention basin will have to meet its own requirements and that though, um, there will have to be maintenance plans as part of a deed, as part of the deed for the property and an operations and a maintenance manual. One of the other biggest changes also to the ordinance is that areas where cars are parked, even if it is on gravel or permeable pavers, that will now can't count towards impervious areas while before that was exempt by state and by us locally. And then finally, um, finally, as a key point, that groundwater mounting analysis is to be completed for all infiltration facilities to avoid adverse impacts to surrounding properties and for street surface ponding, flooding of the basements. And then also one of the most key things in small ordinance or what DEP is allowing us to do, they're allowing us as a municipality to go beyond these model regulations, which we're going to do as a municipality, um, especially since green infrastructure is very important to us. So that was a very quick synopsis. I have, um, two members of our engineering team from T and M on the line tonight to answer more technical questions that I probably cannot answer. Uh, Jay Harzelt's here and also Michael Thomas of T and M.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Jay Harzelt from T and M. We've invited, uh, one of our colleagues, uh, Mike Thomas to join us this evening. Uh, Mike is, uh, T and M's resident expert on all things NJDEP model ordinance, um, and, and part of our stormwater task force. So, uh, Mike is here to answer any of your technical questions. I think Michelle did a fantastic job presenting, um, the main, uh, focus, uh, bullet points, um, in the changes to the new municipal, um, DEP ordinance, stormwater ordinance. And, uh, item number seven, uh, is of, is of particular, uh, note that at any time, uh, after the city of Asbury adopts, uh, this model ordinance with whatever revisions, uh, are made to it, the city can always go above and beyond and, uh, modify the ordinance to make, uh, the requirements more stringent than the DEP model ordinance. Uh, so with that, uh, I ask Mayor and Council or, uh, uh, any of the city staff if you have any particular technical questions.
It's more, I don't have a technical question. And Michelle, great job and I deeply appreciate it. And, uh, Jay, thank you. It's just, uh, again, my personal statement, uh, this is listed later on in the agenda and I'm going to ask for the council to agree to pull this from the agenda because I think to submit this with that, with just the minimum state requirements as it's a service to the city of Asbury Park and its residents because, uh, being on the planning board and being on, listening to other problems, the D O L A commission, everything with groundwater, uh, detention, stormwater runoff, how important it is. I think we have enough time to meet the deadline and to put some real teeth and bone in, into this or, uh, resolution, some ordinance resolutions. So I would ask that, uh, this be pulled from the meeting scheduled and we come back in two weeks with, uh, something with some real teeth in it for the city of Asbury Park. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Not at this time.
Okay. Uh, now, Mr. Mayor, um, before we move on to matters from council, um, I will make an announcement to the general public that resolution twenty twenty-one dash one oh one is being removed from the agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We are now on to matters from city council.
Hello, everyone. So I just wanted to note that today is National Holocaust Remembrance Day. And then I just wanted to bring everyone's attention that we have, um, another opportunity for free COVID testing on Thursday, February fourth from one, from four to seven at the transportation center. I know it's been very frustrating for people who are trying to sign up for the COVID vaccination in that it's, they're finding it almost impossible. Um, and I know that the doses that were allotted to our county have been very low. We expect that to increase and we expect, expected to be easier, uh, to register and get an appointment for the vaccine. So you can register at www.covidnineteen nj.gov. There's also a phone number for those who don't have access to computers. That phone number is eight five five, five six eight, zero five four five. We hear every day from people who are completely frustrated, uh, with trying to get registered and sign up. We feel your frustration. Uh, we're seeing it too. So just be patient and, um, and, and you'll get through. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton?
Uh, yes. Uh, I, I think it's important to let, to know that there are initiatives going on in the background to make it better and easier for us to sign up. Um, as soon as we have more information, we will be sharing that with the general public. And our police department is currently looking for special officers that are going to be working with the city for the next summer and going forward. Um, the deadline for applications is March first, twenty twenty-one. And in order to qualify, you just need to be a high school graduate, have a valid New Jersey driver's license and be able to pass a background test. Uh, you can submit your application or get any information from the Asbury Park website. And that's, um, cityofasburypark.com and it's APPD jobs. Or if you have questions, you can call, um, Patrolman Joel Fiori and his number is seven three two, seven seven five, six five four eight, or joel.fiori@cityofasburypark.com. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes. I would like to just thank the people that walk up and down Fourth Avenue early in the morning with their dogs. I can recall about a month ago, um, and I'm thinking of for wearing their mask. I recall a month ago, people was walking early in the morning and, and nobody had masks on. And it's a big turnaround. So I like to just thank them and ask them to continue to wear their masks and stay safe. That's it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
I have nothing. Thanks.
Mayor Moore?
Uh, yeah. Uh, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to piggyback on, uh, Eileen said, um, COVID is far from gone. Uh, I think today was the first death in New Jersey from the second strain, which could be worse than the first strain. So the thing that's still working is masks, washing your hands, social distancing. So that's gotta be our three main things. And as much as like, uh, sometimes things aren't publicized and we don't take enough vows, uh, I gotta give Amy and Yvonne a ton of credit. They were on a conference call this past week with, uh, V N A and our local clergy. I know Dr. Van Saan, Pastor Jennings and others were on that. Uh, I was on the C B I call with, uh, Lydell Akins and others where we know it's not being rolled out great in New Jersey. We're trying to up it. I gotta give Amy all the credit in the world where she's been trying hard for a senior day. And I gotta give the entire council a, a thumbs up. Like we realized, like, you know, as much as the only way you could register was by, via computer. We know a lot of citizens in Asbury Park do not have computers. So we've been fighting with the county and state on that. And I think we've made progress with, they started the state phone number, but that's been like, uh, almost like the D M B rollout, almost like the unemployment rollout where eventually it will get good. But, uh, believe me, uh, you may not read about it, but, uh, all five of us are working hard to get as many people in Asbury Park, uh, their shots as quick as possible. And again, I urge everybody wash their hands constantly, wear the mask and social distance. Thank you.
Now on to matters from the city manager?
I have nothing, Melody.
Matters from the city attorney?
I have nothing at this time, Melody. Thank you.
We'll now move on to the, um, public partition, public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
To open? Second, Clayton.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Members of the public may participate by using the raise hand function in the meeting or by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the, in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. I will give you a warning when you have one minute remaining. I am calling upon three three five zero. Please state your name and address for the record and star six to unmute yourself.
Ms. McNally, four hundred D O Lake Drive, apartment five D, the Stand Tender, Asbury Park in Jersey. Uh, I'd like to pick up where I left off. I think the mayor and council and city manager, city attorney should be investigated. I think the police should be investigated. I don't know how you get away with everything. You keep things out of the news with your local papers. The public should only know what's going on. And I like when, uh, your, uh, Councilman Kendall talks about masks. He's the biggest violator of all. Really? And he's gonna tell people to wear masks? Really? What kind of hypocrites are we talking about here? Hypocrite. What you doing for the city? Why don't you tell, explain to the city that you got us in a lawsuit because Amy Quinn goes on and says, we're opening the bars and clubs inside because we want to. Come on, lawyer Quinn. You brought the governor in, the attorney general, a lawsuit, a restraining order, and then you back away like, oh, 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 I care so much about the people. Just like with Words Bookstore with the pedophiles in there now charged. Mayor Quinn, why don't you explain your association with Scott Assalone and the lady who gave you the lifetime achievement award and the manager and all the sex crimes they're accused of in there with children? Why don't you talk about that before the election? And then when you have, uh, uh, Tom Arnon, a Republican, come here and give you a thousand dollars with your three running mates and nothing for the other people in the Democratic Party. And then you bring in Joe Grillo with five hundred dollars and, and Senator Gopau with five hundred, with the three of you. How about the rest of the candidates that should have won? And you scared everybody off with your threatening political tactics and power grab with the developers. You got everybody, police, bad police, everybody scaring voters. Anybody who dares not to vote for you gets their flag torn down, garbage thrown on their lawn, threatened. You got blind people afraid of the, of, uh, of the Asbury Council. You're nothing but a power grab. Now you don't get investigated. Look what you did with the Festival of Life, that riot. And look at Quinn down in two thousand seventeen. It's my belief, she was there with Madonna when they were throwing Molotov cocktails at police cars, saying they wanted to blow up the White House while their wife was up here starting trouble in another riot in Asbury. And you didn't even pay for all that stuff. I mean, when is this gonna stop? It's not gonna stop. Good people have to get out of Asbury because it's too dangerous. And no one wants to go to that rotten, failing, dangerous, violent school, right? Where all the people in the city, officials, send their kids out of school, except for now, a, a token that we have. But, you know, how about?
Time's up.
Next.
And we're now moving on to Tracy Rogers. Tracy, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. Um, I, I want to, uh, say that are we, uh, uh, and the mayor alluded to, and I want to say, uh, Happy New Year to everybody. Uh, did we actually look at ways that we're going to make sure many senior buildings and I, I, I was alluded to a rumor that, uh, one senior building was getting, was getting shots. Do we know if the public housing, if all the senior buildings, are we working in formation to get, uh, all the seniors and the communication with those seniors, especially the ones that don't have, uh, computers? Uh, are we communicating? Um, the other thing is, um, I love the mayor's discussion on that, that truck. Uh, are we, are we sitting down and, and discussing things as a community to discuss the needs and necessities of, of, of the city? Like, did that, did that go through a budget hearing on approval for that equipment and the best use? I mean, we can use all hands on deck to discuss these things. And that goes into my last, my last question. And this is, I would be remiss. I asked the former city manager right now, and I'm asking the current city manager right now, can we have department heads educate our, 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 uh, elected officials on needs and necessities for the budget that's coming up, which I know goes into next month unless they change the time on the budget as to when it has to be permitted. So we all can have some communication as to what's going on at each department, what's the needs and any new hires and what we feel is those department heads that we're paying money to give us advice as to what needs to be done. Does the city, current city manager feel that we should have
One minute remaining.
With these department heads to, uh, get that information, if she can answer that for me. Thank you.
Tracy, it's Eileen Chapman. I can answer your first question. I've been in touch with Tom Salin, the director of the Housing Authority, who is working with his outreach coordinator to make sure that all the people in the, all the seniors of the Housing Authority buildings have access to being registered for the vaccination.
And it's more Tracy. Thank you. Uh, Happy New Year to you. And, uh, to expand on that, I'd ask other council people, even Donna, anybody who wants to expand on that, uh, we're all
Uh, we're all working hard. I heard one building was also getting shots for everybody, but I heard that building was paying for everybody. So I don't know if it's the same building and I don't want to say it over the air. But, uh, I know Amy, Yvonne, Donna's all been working on. So if they want to expand anything, please go ahead.
I, I don't mind talking about that call. Maybe Yvonne can correct me. I just want to be clear that this is not materialized yet, that this is something that we are working on materializing, which is with the pastors, the city and the VNA, um, having people go out to, to the places where many of our seniors are, uh, to register them personally, whether it's in a recreation room. It, it's not only, uh, internet Tracy, it's also transportation, I'm sure as you know. So it, it's multifaceted on, on getting some of, some, some demographics in Asbury, the vaccines that currently qualify. So, so there is conversations and trainings and things happening. But, you know, I just want to keep that tentative until, you know, it, it, it's ironed out. And Yvonne or Donna can correct anything I said that, 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 that's potentially incorrect.
No, what you said is correct. We're, we're trying to make sure that our seniors are definitely first on the list to get taken care of. And we understand the, the challenges. We understand that they don't have the access to social media. So we are planning for individuals to actually go out and one-on-one register them. Um, the plans are not cohesive yet, but they will be shortly. And we're also hoping that there are gonna be doses set aside for the seniors so they don't have to wait months and months to get the, the dose that, that they require. So all I can say is we're working on it and we're working diligently. Just give us a little bit of time and hopefully we'll come and get back with something that works for the city and especially works for our seniors.
Uh, this is Donna Tracy. So just to piggyback on everyone else who said, yes, um, our director of social services, Doug, has been working with the VNA, register those individuals with no computer access, those that have some functional need. Um, they hope to start doing that shortly. So we'll, we'll be able to start to register people. Um, and as Amy and Yvonne stated, access to vaccines is not something we really have, have any control over, but we can certainly work to get people registered. And I think that will help to get these people aligned for the actual vaccines when they become available. Um, and to your questions about the budget, um, absolutely. Um, the department heads have submitted some numbers to us. Um, I'll be reviewing them with the CFO and other staff. And, um, we will be, um, providing, uh, council with documents that outline five-year plans, uh, for capital improvements as well as the operational budget. And, um, you know, I don't want to speak too out of turn, but I think there'll be some opportunities to make some cuts this year within our municipal services, um, within the budgets without cutting any services. But, um, probably within the next month, we should have all that documentation in place.
Okay. Unless somebody else has something else to add, uh, next?
Hey, I'm calling upon, uh, Carrie Butch. Carrie, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Carrie Butch, five hundred Deal Lake Drive. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you're doing on the vaccines and getting seniors registered. That's exactly what you should be doing with the churches as we discuss early on in this crisis. So that's, I'm, I'm excited to see you guys working on that. Um, and I thank you for that. Last time I came to the mic, which was at the last meeting, I brought up the idea of, um, in addition to having council members in the minutes and what they discuss, that we also put what people, what, what the citizens and residents discuss in the minutes. And John, you thought it was a great idea. I was hoping
Okay, Carrie, Carrie, let me cut you off. You'll get extra like 20 seconds. You're absolutely right. And, and the next agenda will reflect that. It got skipped and missed on this agenda. And I'll take the fault, but I guarantee you, next agenda will have that.
All right. Excellent. Cause, um, that's way to, way to get stuff done, man. Way to get stuff done. All right. Okay.
Nope. Thank you.
I also want to back on Tracy and, um, talk about how excited I am to have opportunities for the public involved in budgeting. And then last but not least, I want to talk about the Equity Committee. Where are we in the process? Will there be an opportunity for the public? For an open public meeting with the Equity Committee? I know you guys are responsible for writing a report. And we can help the public weigh in on that prior to it being published. Um, and I want to thank everybody very much for what they're doing. Last but not least, if it's, if it's, if people run out of their time, can we, can we keep them on? So that if there's a follow-up question, they get it. So that's all. That's, that's another question I have. Last but not least. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, if the last question was like, can you bank your time? The answer is no. I, you, you broke up a little bit, Carrie. So, and then as far as equity, if Yvonne or Amy wants to answer, go ahead.
Uh, I can start. Yvonne can, um, maybe Yvonne can correct anything or elaborate if, if that works. Where we, the Equity Committee continues to meet multiple times a month, every other Tuesday. We just finished our last public, um, session where we've met with, I think, ten to twelve, uh, local leaders, churches, nonprofits. I think we're gonna process what we've heard from there and then have a, um, larger dialogue, public dialogue. So the short end answer to that, I believe is yes. However, you know, that is a, that is a committee decision. Um, and, and am I missing anything, Yvonne?
The answer is yes. There is going to be an open public forum. And subsequent, there will be a report that will be made to the council and to the public. And we are gonna be open to feedback because this is not just, just for us. It's not for the Equity Committee. It's for the community. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Next?
I am calling upon four, uh, eight, one, three, two, eight, one, three, two. Please state your name and address for the record. Eight, one, three, two, star six to unmute yourself.
Yes, um, I, my name's Bill Macklin. I reside at ten seventy Ocean Avenue, uh, in Asbury Park. Uh, and although a proud contributor and supporter to save Asbury's waterfront, I speak to you as a resident and do not speak for Saw. This Tuesday past, I witnessed via Zoom the Planning Board meeting uh, regarding the proposed pool club, controversy which been front and center to my knowledge in our city for more than two years. I was riveted by remarks made, sort of voted by member Alexis Taylor with a supportive echo by member Ms. Calippo. Um, excuse me if I mispronouncing that last name. I do not know the lady. Ms. Taylor addressed courageously, I felt, the matter which underlies this seemingly endless argument primarily between local government and community. That matter being the waterfront redevelopment plan and its progeny. In carefully selected, eloquent language, Ms. Taylor discussed the emergent need to update the plan. An update which primarily includes current knowledge of environmental factors affecting our sensitive oceanfront, among other pertinent themes. By implication, an update in which criteria governing the approved development would not find the current pool club proposal acceptable. Admittedly, I'm a resident of only two years, but I've made an effort to follow the instant controversy closely as my circumstances would permit. To my knowledge and belief
One minute remaining.
This is, to my knowledge and belief, this is the first statement by a public official or if it's offering an enlightened way forward and resolving a very, very difficult controversy, which appears endless as these new oceanfront proposals may appear. What is next? I, lead us, City Council. Uh, please address the matter now. We're prepared to follow. Thank you and everybody stay safe.
I, I thank you and stay safe yourself, sir. And, uh, I'm not talking about anyone's project or anything, but, but to say, if you and I have an agreement and we have a legally binding agreement, it cannot be changed. If I want to change you, you gotta change it. It's gonna be done unilateral. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon five, one, two, four. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Freedom Morano, Eighth Avenue. I also was listening to the Planning Board meeting. I thought it was, uh, kind of a, a joke, the way it went on. This is after two years and nobody can make a decision about the two hundred foot wall. And you know, first of all, I'd like to know how anybody can build a pri- a private beach club on public property? Is that, isn't the beach a public property? The pool that was there before was public. Everybody could go to it. Now you're building something private on public land. Are they gonna pay taxes? You can't ask these questions because cervical will jump down your throat. It's not the question they ask at the Planning Board. But, uh, John, I want to thank you for your, uh, comments that night too. And I have to compliment you again tonight on the rescue vehicle. I thought, I thought that was quite interesting, the way it happened. And I liked your comments at the Planning Board. What is wrong with everybody? Like you just said, we have a contract. But how many times have you amended that contract? Over a hundred times. So you can amend it one more time if you have to. You know that. You meet an executive session and you change everything in the redevelopment plan. I don't even think it's the same plan. But I really would like to know how a private beach club could be on public property? I never thought of it until, uh, we had this last meeting. And that Planning Board should not be afraid to say no. I know they were leaning to saying yes, uh, because we have to follow the plan and it's in the plan. But, you know, once in a while you have to deviate from those things and you've deviated from them many times. And one more time wouldn't hurt you. That beach club shouldn't be, I don't even think it's a beach club. I never saw a beach club that was like a, a square box.
One minute remaining.
And even Mr. Gonzalez, who is our planner, he even said it was the ugliest building he ever saw. So, I mean, what's so hard about correcting this? And where is the TRC? I thought that was their design that they came up with. Are they still in existence? I don't hear too much about them. I'd like an answer to that one. But, John, think about what you said. We have a contract. We all know that. But you can deviate from the contract. You know what you could do and nobody cares. Add them to the list of the people that are suing us. We wouldn't, you know, I think that's one fight we would win. I don't think a private beach club could be on public property. I'd like to know how they're gonna figure, are they gonna get a pilot program for that too? There's five pilot programs in their new building. As somebody just said before, they are land grabbing.
Time's up.
Okay, Rita, let me just correct you on one thing. Uh, the proposed project you're talking about as far as the beach club, it's not one inch on city property. It's totally on private property. There's no question about that. As far as you say, Mr. Gonzalez, our attorney or our planner, whatever, I don't think the name is right. I, I, his last meetings, three, three people said three different names. I'm not sure. He was the witness for the, uh, people for Saw. Uh, and as far as amendment, uh, yeah, I think we've done like two amendments since I've been on council, maybe more. You can open for that, whatever it is, is. But as far as like, as far as like you can change things, like you know, and I know because we're here, in two thousand and, I'm gonna say ten, in that era, the city said, we got them right where we want to. We're gonna take them to court and we're gonna beat them. And they bonded a court of a million dollars plus the three hundred thousand dollars they already had. And they got their butts kicked in court and we lost more than we gained. So, I mean, we're not gonna just open up lawsuits with, uh, and I Star is a partner with the city and the city's partner of I Star's score into the agreement. We're not just gonna like randomly let, let sue people and waste taxpayers' money. If the suit can't be won and we have our attorneys looking at all agreements with everybody, not just in the waterfront, throughout the town, and we can find somebody in default, and this is the only council has found somebody in default in one case, we will continue to do that. And, uh, Rita, I'm glad you're up and healthy. And, uh, next?
I'm calling upon Felicia Simmons. Felicia, please state your name and address for the record.
Felicia Simmons, um, ten thirty-four Soul Avenue, Front B. Happy New Year, everyone. Um, I'm just saying that, uh, how happy of time that we're in right now, um, in this new year. We all made it through, um, to see twenty twenty-one. And, um, what a exciting year is with upon our election was our new president and our new vice president. Um, I'm looking, um, and seeing across the United States, all these different initiatives, these different things that kind of inspire, um, us as citizens. A re- a newfound respect and patriotic, um, um, zeal for, um, the community. And also just wanted to say, um, for people who are expecting, um, the initiative, um, in the next month or so, um, as of state law, which I know you spoke of and the city council already knows, a state, um, the state executive order from the governor, that, um, the petition, uh, referendum will be held, um, in August, I mean, April, um, as of right now. Um, and just like to say how appreciative I am for everyone who sat down and had a conversation, who, um, and everyone who is, um, participating in our, um, rights as a citizen of the, this great United States. And also just even people who are here, um, just to be here, like our dreamers and who are looking for, um, a better future. And we'll continue to work together, um, everyone to work together, looking forward to it, to make sure that everyone in the city has the best, um, possible life, um, and, um, quality of life, um, that is possible. And that's pretty much it. And again, Happy New Year to everybody. And how great is it to be in twenty twenty-one?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you Felicia and Happy New Year to you. Uh, next?
Not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Move it, Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now closed to the public.
Hey Melody, it's more, can I just interrupt you for one second? I apologize. I should have said this one before. Uh, it's important, uh, the deadline for the senior freeze is February first. So anybody who hasn't applied for that, you got like two or three more days to apply for that. And with these troubling economic times for all, please, if you qualify, apply for it. Thank you.
You're welcome. We are now on to the minutes. We have the municipal council minutes of the executive session of January thirteenth and the regular meeting minutes of January thirteenth. Do I have a motion?
Second Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to individual resolutions. Individual resolution twenty-one dash forty-three, a resolution amending a contract authorizing Clark, Canton and Hints to perform various actions from the master plan. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second Kendall.
Questions or comments before we move to roll call? Not hearing any roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to We're on to Resolution 21-73, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a rescue truck for the fire department. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Second, second more.
Any questions or comments before we move to roll call? Not hearing any? We will now move to roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
No.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution fails. We are on to Resolution 21-88, which is a resolution approving the payment of bills. Councilmember Chapman is abstaining from Item 20-00776. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move. Second Kendall.
Second Quinn.
Any questions or comments before we move to roll call? Not hearing any? Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
We're on to Resolution 21-89, a resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriation reserves in the fiscal year 2020 budget. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Second more.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution 21-90, a resolution authorizing the repairs to the skylight at the municipal building. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-91, a resolution authorizing the annual renewal of Adobe. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Second Clayton.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-92, a resolution authorizing the purchase of access control security system at the transportation center. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall. Second more.
Second Quinn.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-93, a resolution authorizing an annual service agreement for a mobile data service, service coverage. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Clayton.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-94, is the resolution authorizing a renewal agreement with Passport Labs, Inc. for a mobile parking application. Do I have a motion?
Move it Clayton.
Second more.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
No.
Council, Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-95, a resolution authorizing a contract extension for the transportation of liquid sewage sludge from AP wastewater treatment plant to PVSC. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second more.
Second Quinn.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-96, a resolution authorizing a professional service contract to Meridian Occupational Health PC for employment exams and physicals. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Kendall.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-87, a resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Visiting Nurse Association of Central Jersey Community Health Center, Inc. regarding the use of the Asbury Park Senior Center for the administration of COVID-19 vaccinations. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Second Clayton.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-98, a resolution rejecting bids, bids for beach headquarters. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Do I have a second?
Second more.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes, sorry.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-99, a resolution to approve a person-to-person liquor license transfer for a reduction in premises for 210 Fifth Avenue Venture Urban Renewal LLC. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it Quinn.
Second Kendall.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-102, a resolution authorizing appointments Sunset Lake Commission. And that person is Barbara Kryzak. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it Quinn. Second Quinn.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are, do, I have a motion to adjourn?
Move it Kendall.
All in favor? All in favor?
Everybody.
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned.
Thanks everyone.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Stay safe everyone.